All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Today is April 5th, 2021, and we appreciate the folks that are here with us and the folks who are tuning in for joining us at a Rowan County Commission meeting. We always begin our meetings with a couple of things. We're going to have our pledge, but we're also going to have what's called a solemnizing prayer. A solemnizing prayer is for the commissioners; it's not for you. You're welcome to say your own silent prayer if you like, but we ask the, our Chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, if he'll come forward to do this. As crazy as the world is becoming, we look for wisdom, as much as we can get it, and this is certainly a great source of wisdom. And so commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we're honored to be here today, and we thank you for our County Commissioners, Lord, and we thank you for all they work that they do for Rowan County, Lord. I thank you for the dedication they have, Your Lord, and the service they provide for Rowan County. I ask you, Lord, to give them the wisdom they need today at this meeting today, your blessings upon them today, and we ask this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, for being with us. Happy April. It's always good to see you. All right, we're going to look at the agenda for the first time in a while. Have any changes to the agenda? Does anyone have any changes? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as provided?
Move.
All right, we have four motions on the table. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. The minutes of March 15th were provided for us. Any changes to the minutes? If not, a motion and a second, please, to approve. All right, motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Consent agenda, items A through J. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Some move.
All right, motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, then we'll move straight to reports. We have a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month and a presentation by the Community Child Protection Team. And so Commissioner Cluseman, I think you have a proclamation for us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child maltreatment is a community problem, and finding a solution depends upon involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when parents find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and unable to cope. And whereas approximately 102,718 children were reported abused and/or neglected by their parents or caretakers in North Carolina in fiscal year 2019. And whereas 52 children were victims of homicide due to abuse or neglect by their parent or caretaker in North Carolina during the year 2018. And whereas the majority of child maltreatment cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas the effects of child maltreatment are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child maltreatment prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, the Rowan County Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Rowan County, and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child maltreatment and strengthen the communities in which we live this fifth day of April 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I believe we have with us, folks from the Community Child Protection Team are here, and so they're going to make a short presentation with us. So thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Uh-huh, welcome.
Greetings, Rowan County leaders. For those of you who do not know me, I am Micah Ennis, the Director of the Rowan County Department of Social Services. On behalf of our Social Services Board and our dedicated staff, I want to greet you and thank you for setting aside this moment of reflection, for setting aside this time to stand by the children in our community by making the proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month in Rowan County. Colleagues and friends joining me today to represent the Community Child Protection Team are Alyssa Harris, who you know, of the Rowan County Health Department, and Erin Moody, who you may not know from our Prevent Child Abuse Rowan here in Rowan County. You have the team's annual report in your board packet, and if there are any questions, we will certainly do our best to answer those. I did just want to comment briefly, each of us did. Each year, we take this moment to stop and remember. We reflect on the Rowan County child welfare system to honor the lives of the children that we lost in 1997. That dark moment in our history, in our county's history, became a catalyst for change both locally and across the entire state of North Carolina. I was still a relatively new social worker when these tragedies struck our community, but I remember distinctly how leaders put aside differences to come together for solutions. Bonds were formed between CEOs, directors, concerned citizens, and elected officials, and it appears to me that those partnerships still remain intact. We gathered the courage at that time to look at ourselves, to critically examine our own practices, each other's practices, and what was working and not working about our partnerships. We look at data today and as we did then, and we review stories. We tell the stories as a part of our change efforts, which is at the heart of the Community Child Protection Team's work. One of the data points that I wanted to point out that's in your packet that we're concerned about is that in 2020, there were a good many fewer child abuse reports than there have been in previous years. Now, in some contexts, we would consider that good news, but based on the fact that we know many of our children have not been in school and in daycare settings, not as many folks are observing them and their needs, we are concerned that this might be a lack of reporting and underreporting of existing child abuse and neglect. We hope that April Child Abuse Prevention Information and Education will help our community members recognize and report concerns, and we also hope that our community will provide support and encouragement to parents who might be struggling during this time. Rowan County has strong partnerships in prevention, and Erin Moody will share a little bit more about that with you.
Good afternoon. As Micah said, my name's Erin Moody, and I'm the Prevention and Education Coordinator for Prevent Child Abuse Rowan. We have also seen in 2020 a decline in referrals, which is not good news for us. Child advocacy centers across the nation have seen an extreme drop in the number of children that we're seeing, which does not match the trend that was steadily climbing prior to COVID-19. And so I wanted to report out on what we're doing to try and fix that. And so in light of COVID-19, we very rapidly distributed informational help sheets for law enforcement officers and people working in education on how to recognize and respond to child abuse in a new virtual world where you may not see your students or have close access to children that you may have previously been able to notice that something was wrong with. We have also been very fortunate to partner with the Rowan Salisbury School System in presenting a newly developed recognizing and responding to child abuse training in light of a virtual world in a pandemic. Also, in the spring of 2020, most of my 5th grade students, which is typically 22 schools' worth, missed the opportunity to have their Internet and cellphone safety class, which we know is extremely important and is a growing problem for kids today. So we have been able to digitize a lot of our lessons and make them available on our website and on our Facebook page, which is so important. I did want to name some of our wonderful community partners that we were able to work with in 2020 around recognizing and responding to child abuse. Hood Theological Seminary, NC Works, the Kiwanis and Civitan Clubs, Healthy Rowan, Partners in Learning, Head Start, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, Communities and Schools, Rowan Salisbury School System, as well as the PTA, local churches, and we have reached an extremely wide audience through educational materials that we've made available through our social media sites. Specifically, I teach the Stop, Go, Tell Abuse Prevention Program for elementary students, which we have copyrighted and offer to other child advocacy centers. This typically means about 2,900 1st and 5th grade students receiving education about abuse prevention twice a year. In light of the pandemic, we have made our educational program virtual, so all students who are physically attending school, where I can guarantee that they're sitting in a safe environment and have appropriate follow-up services if they have questions or need help afterwards, have had access to this program. And thanks to our partners in education, we have had approximately 1,450 students in the fall through 19 elementary schools who were able to still receive this educational program. And we know it works because just in the fall alone, 20 students needed follow-up services with a safety plan, with a safe adult, based on questions or comments that they made or someone that they reached out to after the class. So I am very happy to report that spring semester classes are underway, and we want to serve just as many children as possible. And hopefully, one day, all of our remote learning students will come back to school, and we might get a chance to reach them as well. In summary, we could not do the work that we do to prevent child abuse without our partnerships with the Rowan County Department of Social Services, our many local law enforcement agencies, the Department of Juvenile Justice, mental health providers, and our incredibly supportive community. And I always like to reiterate that child abuse prevention is all of our responsibilities, and it does take a village to fix this problem and support children and their families. And lastly, we would just like to invite everyone to help us recognize this important time at the Prevent Child Abuse Rowan First Annual Food Truck Fundraiser, where you can come, enjoy some delicious takeout, and a portion of all proceeds will go back into the programming that we support for kids in Rowan County. Thank you so much, and I'll hand you over to Alyssa.
Hey, Erin.
Yes.
That digitized learning, the phone and Internet safety, is that something you'd like to put out over the, do you have that, is that a website?
It's a 10-part video series, actually, on our Facebook page, which is Prevent Child Abuse Rowan, so anyone can access it at any time.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Child Abuse Rowan, go to the Facebook page. Parents, your kids can watch this 10-part series.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. As I wrap us up, I do want to just reiterate, thank you so much for taking this time to bring this issue to light. I think it's so important for our citizens to hear this and to have April recognized and proclaimed as Child Abuse Awareness Month. From the public health perspective, child abuse and neglect and other adverse childhood experiences can have a tremendous impact on lifelong health, opportunity, and well-being if left untreated. For example, exposure to violence in childhood increases the risks of injury, future violence, and victimization, perpetration, substance abuse, delayed brain development, lower educational attainment, and limited employment opportunities. The great news is that child abuse and neglect are preventable. Protective factors like strengthening economic support to families, changing social norms to support parents and positive parenting practices, providing quality care and education early in life, and programs like those supported by DSS and Prevent Child Abuse Rowan to intervene and to lessen harms and prevent future risk. So thank you for investing in positive mental health programs that work to democratize mental health by supporting programs like the Community Resiliency Model, where we now have 20 community partners across different agencies trained, and we are able to leverage that funding to actually extend and offer a second training in June of this year. So this week is National Public Health Week as well, and the theme is Building Bridges to Better Health. And this partnership and proclamation is an excellent example of that. So finally, thank you to our partners who continue this essential work to DSS, Prevent Child Abuse Rowan, and all of those mentioned today, and to every organization who contributes to promoting healthy and happy families and children. Thank you.
Chairman, I'd just like to remind my fellow commissioners and the public that Prevent Child Abuse Rowan was one of the things that we are, quote, "investing in our children" and was part of our budget this last year, and I really appreciate the increase we were able to give so we can provide programs to help families work through those stressors that may hopefully prevent violence in the future.
Well, thank you. We'll move on then to item number three, and Commissioner Kaski has a proclamation for Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this in the form of a motion. Whereas the services and functions performed by the Rowan County Public Safety Telecommunicators are critical to the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rowan County and the municipalities. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators provide 24-hour service, services seven days a week as the virtual link in the chain of emergency services providers, and whereas these dedicated professionals are the initial point of contact for citizens in crisis situations who need emergency services assistance. In answering the public's daily cries for help, they are often instrumental in saving lives and reducing property damage when tragedy strikes. Now, therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 11th through 17, 2021, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Rowan County and urges all citizens to acknowledge the contributions of these loyal public servants this the fifth day of April 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If any of you out here or watching have ever been to the 911 Center, you'll see how high-tech that facility is, and it really is the brain of Rowan County Emergency Services. And so what those folks do 24/7, 365, is amazing work. We've had, all had the privilege of standing there and watching them work, and it's an amazing thing they do. So Alan, if you'll come forward, we'd like to come out and present this to you guys. And I don't know if there's someone wants to get a picture of this. Thank you, guys, and we're going to pass the folks from Child Abuse Rowan. It is, it's now our honor and privilege to introduce to the Rowan County Commissioners and the Rowan County, the new School Superintendent of Rowan County, Rowan Salisbury School System, Dr. Tony Watlington. I've had the opportunity to sit down on a couple of occasions with Dr. Watlington and welcome him to the community, but also learn about his philosophy on education and what he intends to do in his new role here in Rowan County. And so I thought it'd be a good opportunity to invite him to say hello to the Board and hello to Rowan County in a different venue. So welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One minute.
One minute. All right. I can do it. I'm going to pass the first chest, I promise you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. First of all, let me just say, I am so very honored to be here in Rowan County as the new superintendent of Rowan Salisbury Schools. I'm coming here from Guilford County, North Carolina, where I served 26 years as a teacher, principal, central office administrator, and chief of schools and deputy superintendent. Prior to working in Guilford County Schools, I also have experience working as a bus driver. Very proud of my work as a bus driver and a custodian at one point. I want you to know that I'm excited to be here. I am a very good steward of the public tax dollars and resources, and I'm always laser-focused in working with our great Board of Education to make sure that we provide an extraordinary education for all of our students every day. I grew up in eastern North Carolina, in the middle of a tobacco field, and so lived in Guilford, lived for a short term, a short time in New Jersey as well as in Ohio. I want you to know that I see so many great things happening in this very fine county and in our school district. And next Monday, I am going to do a presentation to our Board of Education, and it will be a reflection on the first 100 days in Rowan Salisbury Schools. I came here on December 4th for the first contracted day, and then started officially on January the 11th, and I'm excited to share with the Board of Education all the great things I've seen here and things that I think are great opportunities for next steps to build on the great work that Dr. Lynn Moody, a former superintendent Moody, and the Board of Education had worked on for a number of years. As a part of that presentation, we're going to talk a lot about renewal and how exciting it is to be a part of the only renewal school district in this state. I don't take it for granted that there are 115 school districts in the state of North Carolina, and there's only one renewal school district. And so we're going to be talking about our plans to make sure that we are successful since we have to make reports to the State Board of Education every year, and then there'll be a formal evaluation to say, does renewal work in a school district where the local school board has tons of flexibility that other school districts don't have? We're also going to be sharing with the Board of Education an overview of our strategic plan development process that we're going to begin this month and will continue throughout the summer. That new plan that the Board of Education will vote on by the end of the summer will identify exactly how we're going to make the renewal work together with our community and partners and elected officials to make renewal a success. It will identify the specific goals that we're going to hold ourselves accountable for reaching under that strategic plan. We're going to identify the strategies that we'll invest our time and resources in, and then we're going to also share with the Board of Education about how we'll be very transparent about making public transportations, about public presentations about how we're doing as far as our progress each and every year. I am so honored to be here. I had an opportunity to meet with Chairman Ed and Vice Chairman Green, and a couple of visits to local businesses, and I look forward to meeting all of you and working very hard on behalf of the citizens of Rowan County. Again, I thank you for giving me the great honor to be in Rowan County. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for being here. We've enjoyed our time together so far. Look forward to good partnership, and please let us know what we can do to make your new position a successful one.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to public comment, and we've got Karen, and I'm sorry, it looks like it was a bad pen. I can't read the...
It was.
What's your last name, Karen?
Let's see.
Okay, come on forward. It's good to have you. Welcome.
Oh, thank you for having me. Not here for a good reason. Ah, let's see, where'd she put my stuff? Oh, there she is. I've been a resident of Mooresville for, since 1995. I moved over into Rowan County maybe seven, eight months ago, and I'm beside myself. I live next door to Dawson Downs Lane, and there is this illegal dump. If you turn around and look at, oh, you guys can see it. He, these people have an illegal dump. It's on 2.77 acres in a neighborhood at the end of a cul-de-sac. I moved to my home, and I'm like, why are these dump trucks going back and forth, back and forth, all hours of the day? They're rickety wrecked old trucks, don't have plates on them, no mud flaps, tobacco rotor, bringing stuff in. I hear them dump. I'm lucky enough that I have a drone, and I would take it up and I would see, and I'm like, oh my God, what are they doing? So one day, I went and followed one of the dump trucks, and they went through roads to Kannapolis, went and tore down a old home that was on fire months before, because this little cute gentleman was planting a tree. And I said, "Sir," I said, "what are they doing over there?" "Oh, the house were done months ago. They're demoing it." So I came home, and a little bit later, here comes the dump trucks. So they dumped the house. It was 1939 house, because I looked it up on Zillow. It has asbestos, and I'm sure there was lead paint in '39. Here it is, he's burning it. He's burning lead paint, asbestos, two-by-fourths, insulation, you name it. Now, at the end of this cul-de-sac, there's the backhoe running, he's building a bigger pile to burn the next guy. There's a creek over here on this side, I'm sure one of the videos will show it. It's called East Fork Creek that goes down to a reservoir in Cattle Creek Reservoir. I just went and had my water tested. Now, I have a well right back by this dump. Here's all these homes. They're not million-dollar homes, but still, they're people. I talked to some of my neighbors, and my one neighbor won't even let their kids out. And this gentleman, he burns mostly at night. When he started this fire, it was mostly like 4:30, but he burns at night, so nobody can see the smoke. Now, he dumps everything possible. I've dealt with, when I called the county, talked to Mr. Sinclair, talked to Sheriff Vanfield, and the first words out of their mouth was, "This is too big for us. The state has to handle it." So I contacted, they told me to contact Teresa Bradford at the state, and I've sent her everything from November. Now, I've been dealing with her from November. He has holding ponds. Why does he have holding ponds? What's he dumping there? These neighbors years ago called and said they have blue barrels owned by the house saying "used oil" written on them. Why does he have holding ponds? This is mind-bowling to me. Rowan County is a beautiful place, and I'm just sick that all this stuff is getting in our soil, in our air at night with the asbestos. The soil's contaminated, and my water, I spent a lot of money having it tested, few things in it, but one thing that has shown up is a barnium. And if it's, there's two types of barnium that is from waste sites. And the laboratory that I took it to in Huntersville, they said they can't differentiate, but they gave me two numbers that I have to send my water to. And I hope to God it's not toxic, because it's going into the creek. It's, can you pull up those photos? There's a photo. It shows the dump, and there's the creek right next to it. And sad to say, I wasn't on his property. There's another gentleman that owns the property there. He owns like 30 acres. And when I walked back there, it is 20 feet tall of him pushing brush, concrete, broken debris. And what this guy does is he'll hook... him pushing brush, concrete, broken debris. And what this guy does is he'll hu- empty a house, and then he'll bring dirt and cover it. Now, Teresa caught him when, when I finally talked to Teresa Bradford. She says, "You're no longer allowed to burn. Do not burn." Well, he's not supposed to be doing anything. This is owned residential and agriculture. This called, this business is called Renee's Demolition. They have a mailbox stuck in the middle of the field, so their address is Unity Church Road, but it's in a field, but they use Dawson Downs Lane up and down all day long. I, I feel so bad for those people, because they've been living with this nightmare. I'm the new kid on the block, and I hope these people are not vindictive or anything. I, I don't wanna come home one day and my house be burnt down, or my animals killed. I've tried to remain anonymous, but I'm starting to lose faith in the state that they're actually gonna do something. It's just, are we all gonna get cancer then somebody does something?
So, um, why don't you come up here? We're probably not gonna comment on this.
Okay.
Okay. Um, will you come up here and just take my pen and, and give me a clear spelling of your name, and then give us your address?
Chairman, we're aware of this, and we're working with the state on it.
Chairman, we're aware of this, and we're working with the state on it.
All right. Thanks for coming to us, okay?
Thank you.
You'll, you'll hear from us.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, and thank you for, uh, for bringing this, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that, uh, has not yet signed up for public comment that would like to? All right, if not, then we'll move on, and we'll move on to item number five, our favorite thing, uh, to talk about solar energy, uh, text amendments and land use plan recommendations. Ed?
of the ZTA 0219 text and the land use plan recommendations, I will briefly summarize the amendments, and I'll highlight some of the commission recommendations from the March 15th public hearing. So, in section 21 dash four of the zoning ordinance, there were three new terms that were proposed as part of the ZTA process, uh, financial security, solar energy systems. If you recall, there's a residential, there's a non-residential, there's a roof-mounted, and then there's utility scale, um, all defined within solar energy system. And then there was this concept of the system area. In section 21 dash 34, which, um, lists the requirements for economic development districts, the proposal was that non-residential and roof-mounted systems would be in, uh, allowed with special requirements in each of the four ED zoning districts. In section 2156, it's the specific criteria for, uh, special required or uses that are permitted administratively with, um, special requirements, and those include residential, non-residential, and roof-mounted. And then in 2160 is the conditional use requirements. The change there was that utility scale, um, would only be permitted, or, excuse me, would only be considered in the industrial district as a conditional use permit. Um, as part of these amendments, junkyards were removed from the RA zoning category as a conditional use permit option. At the public hearing, at our last meeting, um, the recommended changes to the conditional use requirements are here. I've just excerpted them from the text. There was a lot of discussion from the industry about the 25 internal, um, foot setbacks. That was stricken from the ordinance. What we have proposed instead of that was that common property lines within the system area are not subject to setback standards. So, again, this, the 25-foot setback was removed. Also, in the conditional use section, um, the maximum system area for, um, utility-scale solar systems was 50 acres. The board recommended to reduce that to 25 acres. And then in the decommissioning plan, we stated the county will have the option to, um, have the, the decommissioning plan reviewed by a third-party engineer, and the plan is effective for the first 10 years of operation. Um, continuing on with part of the decommissioning section, um, we stated that it should be based on the template solar ordinance, um, example decommissioning plan. And then, um, we stated that the plan is required to be updated every five years thereafter from the 10-year anniversary. In the conditional district section, those same changes were made. Um, the internal setbacks were removed. Decommissioning plan requirements were changed to what we just talked about. And you see supplementary materials. What it had previously been is as applicable now that that text has been removed. That effectively requires that each new application that comes is gonna have to have some type of review and approval by the Utilities Commission. So, the proposal, um, we talked about the four types of systems, residential, non-residential, roof-mounted, utility. You can see that residential is subject to the special requirements in all zoning districts. The non-residential are allowed in RA, and then in the non-residential districts, which would be the CBI Neighborhood Business, institutional and industrial. Roof-mounted allowed in all districts. Utility-scale solar would only be an option in the RA district and the CBI district as a conditional district. It would remain a conditional use in the industrial district. Garbage dumps, landfills, and those type of things were removed as conditional use, and now will be considered as conditional districts in the RA. They will remain conditional in the industrial. Um, zoos likewise were changed from conditional use in the RA, and now will be conditional district and remain as a conditional use in the CBI district. The general recommendations to the land use plan, um, the underlying text is what was added as a result of the public hearing, that one of those recommendations would be areas currently served or having the potential to be served by water and sewer infrastructure are not preferred. And then the next would be subject to potential utility extension. Sites having identified poor soils or building septic constraints are generally encouraged for selection. Here's the planning board's statement of consistency. As with most things zoning-related, if the commission opts to adopt this text and the land use plan recommendations, you will need to adopt a statement of consistency before taking a I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. We've covered in probably five or six minutes what it's taken us, probably four hours to talk about in the previous meeting, so.
Uh, have you guys discussed, are we behind the ball at all with the commissioner being on Zoom?
Yes, we have. Um, so, due to the, um, COVID standards or the COVID, um, public hearing requirements, we would need to have a follow-up meeting to ratify, um, this text at some point in the near future. But you've already conducted your public hearing, and so what you're voting on is only this text. And so, um, you could hold that meeting remotely. It only requires a majority of the board be present, but it could just be a very simple, um, two or three-minute meeting.
Will we need to extend the moratorium?
Well, I think you probably want to. It depends on how quickly you want to, um, how quickly you wanna meet and follow up and, and ratify these. There's a 24-hour rule, so it would have to be tomorrow. Um, but theoretically, there's a 24-hour window where you don't have an effective, with this, these changes would not be effective.
Would you com- would you comment on the difficulty of just extending this, so we just don't find ourselves, and so that we can do it in the next couple of days?
Sure. Well, you've, you've, you've got a, um, public hearing that's been duly advertised. You've got an ordinance that's in your packet. Um, we're prepared to, to briefly go over the highlights of that, um, after this. So, you could take the first vote on this, and, um, then we can move to that next item.
All right. Is there any, I know we've been, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one quick question.
Okay.
Okay. It wasn't until our last meeting that I had even heard about these alternative buffers and screening. And my question is, is, um, we've got kind of our traditional ones, 1234 listed. Is it allowable for the commissioners to recommend that the alternative bus- buffers and screenings be used in certain applications, uh, when they come forward? Or is that totally the purview of the-
Sure. Yes, you can, especially in the conditional district application. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm very interested in that, and unfortunately, I don't have any photos to share at this time.
I think Mr. Attorney's had one comment he wanted to make about the, the procedural matters, about the adoption. We're not on the same wavelength.
You got this look on your face like I do. I've seen that look before.
I, I know you have. Um, in, in our discussions about what to do with regard to the ordinance and the extension, um, I would suggest, just in an abundance of caution, that we do both. If you consider adopting the ordinance, hold it open for the 24 hours. You could do the same with the ordinance to extend the moratorium. Um, and, but since we're all here, it's just subject to the 24-hour period to hold the public hearing open, and we could then do both. You could adopt the new ordinance at a special call Zoom meeting, as long as we have a majority of commissioners present. Uh, 48-hour, so, excuse me, subject to notice, 48-hour notice for the special call meeting. Yeah.
We'll talk about that in a minute, right? Yeah.
It, it'll let me get on the same wavelength as, as the planning director. Thank you.
That's scary.
All right. Is there any other discussion on these proposed amendments? All right, if not, then I'll offer up the statement of consistency. ZTA 02 dash 19 is appropriate and necessary to meet the development needs of Rowan County for the following reasons: not previously envisioned by the east and west land use plans. Furthermore, the adoption of ZTA 02 dash 19 is an amendment to the east and west land use plans and is reasonable in the public interest based on the following. This allows a conditional district rezoning with the addition of supplementary materials, allows for solar energy growth while better categorizing system sizes and uses, and encourages solar energy growth in the most appropriate land use areas, provides reasonable standards for screening setbacks and buffering to minimize negative impacts on adjacent properties, and requires financial responsibility for operations and decommissioning of the installed utility-scale system. And it requires conditional district zoning with the CBI and RA zones, and provides a list of recommendations of preferred and discouraged locations and sizes that will be used to review the utility-scale systems located within the CBI and RA districts. I'll make that in form of a motion.
Okay.
All right. Jim, second. Any, any discussion on the statement of consistency? All right, if not, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, uh, I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve the text and land use plan recommendations, uh, for ZTA 02 dash 19. Do we have a second?
Okay.
All right, second. Any other discussion? Uh, Craig's texting in and, uh, saying aye. So, uh, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then, uh, let's move on to item number six. And, uh, that's, uh, for Ed, for the moratorium extension. Could, could we extend it for a week, just to make sure?
We, we've already got it set up for, for 30 days, the way the, the ordinances, the extension ordinance is done, and so you can, you can repeal it at, you know, at that time.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question real quick.
April, can you share that, um, please?
So, if we're gonna have a 30-day moratorium, then why, why do we need to have the special meeting? Can't we just have second reading at the next commission meeting?
This question is-
Because you're, you're, because the, I believe because the, the bylaws stipulate that you have to have, um, a majority present.
I'm just wondering, if we're having a 30-day extension on the moratorium, can't we just have the second reading at the next commission meeting?
Ed, we're, we're in, we're in the same issue with, with both ordinances. Because we have one remote, we've got a 24-hour period, so neither one of those is effective today. Yeah.
Well, I mean, is this, this doesn't fall in the same thing if you don't have a unanimous vote? Do you have to have a second reading?
You have to have a second reading, and the second reading can't be until the next regular meeting. Um-
Are you saying we need a second meeting to extend the moratorium?
Are we doing a special call meeting in 48 hours? Is that a regular meeting? Or-
No, because, no, because we're not, we're, we're not, we're, we're not operating under the less than unanimous. We're only operating under the remote participation rules. Because we have one commissioner remote, we have a 24-hour public hearing that we have to hold open. So, this isn't, this isn't about a second reading. Yeah.
So, we're not having a second reading, because it's unanimous?
Right. This is only about having a, a meeting to approve the ordinance change after the 24-hour period.
Okay. So, why can't we do it at the next meeting? Why do we have to have one?
When, when does the solar, when does the moratorium expire? I thought it-
To, tonight.
Today. So, that's the issue, is the moratorium expires today. You, you're gonna have to have a special meeting either way. The moratorium expires tonight, and so you've got to take action to extend it, and, and, and we'll have to have a special meeting in 24-
There's gonna be a window where, where it's open.
What's that?
There's, there is gonna be a window where it's open, 'cause we have to wait 24 hours, 48 or whatever.
But you could go ahead and set this for Wednesday when you finish today. I mean, you could do it right now. You could set the special meeting if you wanted to for Wednesday at, you know, 4 o'clock. What, what we have done in the past is approved matters subject to the 24-hour public hearing stay in open. And there's debate about whether it's effective today, or whether it's only effective at the end of the 24 hours when the board takes action again. I'm of the opinion that it's effective now, subject to holding the comment period open, and, and several county attorneys believe that way. School of Government believes differently, and they believe that you should take formal action at the end of the public hearing. Um, and so I think in an abundance of caution, because of the importance of this subject matter, we would take it up, you know, Wednesday during a Zoom meeting to go ahead and, and approve it then. But yes, you're, you're correct. The, the timing presents an issue. we would take it up, you know, Wednesday during a Zoom meeting to go ahead and, and approve it then. But yes, you're, you're correct. The, the timing presents an issue.
But we, what we've done, what, what we've done, the moratorium, I guess that's what we're confused, is the moratorium. So if we voted on this today, it extends the moratorium for a day.
Yeah. Was that a public hearing today to extend?
Yeah.
Yes. Stays open 24 hours for a public hearing. And you can only suspend, you can only suspend public hearings in the case of an emergency. So this was subject to a public hearing and it would stay open for 24 hours. And then so you approve the extension subject to, and then we have the second meeting Wednesday. And since that's where we are, you let me worry about what happens in the 24-hour window.
Okay. All right. So we need to hold a public hearing now. So I'll do that. We'll, uh, we'll call for a public, open public meeting if anyone would like to speak. Hearing none will close the public hearing. And do we have a motion to adopt a 30-day moratorium extension?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye. Craig says aye. All right. Um, we'll move on. Is that it? Yes. Um, when can we do that, Carolyn? Wednesday at four?
I could probably do Zoom for a few seconds.
All right. Craig, can you do, can you do Zoom at four o'clock Wednesday?
Sure. No problem.
All right. So do we need to vote to set that, that meeting? All right. So make a motion, we call a special call meeting on Wednesday at four o'clock?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye. All right. We'll move on to Erin and public hearing for Z01-21.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. April, can you do the other power, or the hour, other PDF? There we go. All right. We have the public hearing for Z0121, a request from RA to CBI, conditional district for a mini warehouse facility. And along with that, we have consideration for an SNIA 0321. This is for K-Town Homes at the 1,000 block of Old Beatty Ford Road on tax parcel 140, 242. So this is a 3.84 acre parcel located along the new alignment of Old Beatty Ford Road, close to the intersection with Boston Road. And this is right across the street from a recently rezoned property for the Morgan Well Company. So if we take a look at the area right now, the site itself is pretty wooded. There's not really a whole lot going on with it. But the property falls in the area three of the eastern land use plan and inside the I-85 US 29 corridor overlay. And that overlay does encourage commercial industrial uses. And also of note is that it's inside the recognized regional node in the Old Beatty Ford Road area, which we since had a land use plan on. And the land use plan does call for the new alignment of Old Beatty Ford Road to be affronted for commercial and mixed-use development. And then it also recommends considering design guidelines for commercial developments inside that area. As far as consistency with the requested zoning district, CBI is generally appropriate in areas defined as highway business on US and NC highways, and also in recognized regional and community nodes. And then this parcel also falls inside the Coldwater Creek Water Supply Watershed 4. And watershed fours have a 36% built-upon area limitation. And the proposed design of this site's gonna be at 39.2%, which is just exceeding what we can approve administratively, which is what's requiring the SNIA permit consideration. So we take a look at compatibility uses. Currently, it's owned rural agricultural, which is primarily a residential district with most of the commercial uses permitted as a rural home occupation. And the requested district, the CBI conditional district, will only allow for the mini warehouse facility that's on the submitted site plan. So right here's the site plan. We're looking at about 25,000 square feet total in storage, located through six buildings. And then the rest of the area is a gravel lot besides the concrete drive connecting Old Beatty Ford Road. And then the site will be surrounded by a black powder chain-linked fence. And then the other half of the lot is proposed to remain undeveloped at this time. And one thing to consider is with this conditional district, the, uh, what's on the site plan is all it's allowed. If they look in the future to do any kind of expansions, they will have to come back to the board for another rezoning request to expand the district. So taking a look in the vicinity, we have, there's a church to the north and a residence on the northern side. Looking east, it's pretty wooded, going back towards the interchange of Old Beatty Ford Road and 85. And then looking west, you can see we have the Morgan Well facility that's going up. And taking a look at the areas, you can see that there's the two larger buildings here, a couple of residents on the Boston Road side, with the most, rest of the area being wooded area. And taking a look at the, at the zoning in the area, the closest commercial district is the CBI conditional district across the street that was recently approved, with the other CBI in the area being currently vacant along 85. And the industrial zoning, we see there is a rock quarry. And if we take a look over towards the 85 interchange, that's all been incorporated into the Kannapolis city limits. As far as potential impacts on facility, that old, the new section of Old Beatty Ford Road has not had any traffic counts done on it yet. But the NC DOT has received a driveway permit application and approved the driveway for the site. And then for watershed calculations, we're looking at, it's a 3.84 acre tract that'll be taken from the watershed. The proposed structure size is 25,800 square feet along six buildings. The other impervious coverage of the gravel is gonna be 39,000 square feet, which brings us to about 65,000 square feet total impervious surface coverage, which is 39.2% of the site, which is just over the 36% that we can do administratively. Then the Coldwater Creek watershed has a watershed total of 4,975 acres. And so far, we've pulled out 8.96 acres in SNIA permits, which is about 1.8% of the total allotment we can pull out of the watershed. And then this was, had a courtesy hearing at the planning board meeting back in February, and they adopted the statement of consistency and the statement of reason for this here. And then historic comments, only the use that's on the site plan can be, should be considered, and that if the board has any mutually agreed upon conditions, they can work with the applicant on those. And then as far as procedures, we'll need to adopt a statement of reasonfulness, consistency, conduct a public hearing, then approve to an higher table the request for both the rezoning request, and then approve to an item table the SNIA permit request. And if y'all have any questions, both me and the applicants are here.
Erin, I've got several questions. We're back in watersheds again.
All right. Let's see. There we go.
Now, uh, my concern here is, could you put the site plan up, please?
Yes. There we go.
Oh, maybe the overview, so we can look at what's around it.
Let's see the, this one here.
So, my question is that, you know, we've got all this empty land around, um, this parcel. And even though this is like 3.8 acres and 1.8% of the allocated amount that can be removed, what, I mean, do we know anything about, um, what other things are gonna go on in this area at all? Here's, here's my concern. Um, once we start exceeding, I believe that to be a slippery slope. So, you know, we get, you know, K-Town Homes and they wanna come in and put a big development in and, you know, they're only 9%. What kind of teeth do we have as a county if we start giving things?
Well, so we have the, so when it comes to the watershed, we have the, the two different processes. The one we're doing right here, the SNIA permit process. So this is removing from our, what we can remove from the watershed itself. In larger developments, we also, we approved a couple of years ago the high-density requirements too, which allow for engineered stormwater. And both of these applications require going to the board. And we actually do have, in certain instances, for larger developments, they're actually required to go to the board after a certain size. This board right here, for approval of their developments. So that would be where teeth would come in because we could have scrutiny at that level.
Maybe right now, when, when plans are submitted in a priority watershed, we have something on the application that talks about, you know, what the non-pervious surface added is going to be, which is going to cause X amount runoff at this amount of rain per hour. I know this all is hypothetical, but I mean, all we have to do is go back over to what creek is it Jade, the one that go through the Catawba? And, you know, the townhomes that were flooded, you know, nobody ever thought that would happen either. So, you know, this, these are my concerns because water's a big issue. And if we approve things now and in the future that impinge upon other property owners, like flooding their, their property, to me, that would be problematic for the county. I don't know. Maybe I'm way off, Mr. Attorney.
We, yeah, we may be talking about two different things, and it may be good to spend some time sort of with you and staff to talk about the concept of watershed and, and these ratios that we're doing, because what, I'm, I'm not sure what the total, what, what does this get us to for this watershed? If they approve it?
If we approve it, we'll have 2.4% of our total allotment taken out.
For my 16 years I've been county attorney, for all the requests that have come in for this watershed, we're still only at 2.4% of 100%. So we've still got 97.6% of that allocation to be used. But what you're talking about are issues with just general surface water, and, and property owners do have a right to divert water. They do have a right to push water where they want to go. And so you, you begin to regulate, you know, sort of a common law right that people have to improve their property. So, but, but this ordinance isn't really designed to address flooding as much as it is to, it, it's designed to deal with water quality. Is, is that a fair assumption? I mean, I mean, is that fair to say?
I'd say so.
This is more about water quality and runoff from impervious surfaces than it is about flooding. And I think it sounds to me over the last several requests that we've had, that your concern is about pushing water in different areas in addition to the quality. So, um, we don't regulate total surface area from a flooding standpoint, but we do have this regulation in place from a water quality standpoint.
Okay. But then I would go back to, and we do need to have this discussion. I agree with you totally. But I think the sticking point is that, you know, even though it's a tiny little bit, we're still allowing that exceedance of 3.2%. You know, it doesn't, it's not much, but is, is it, you know, downhill slope?
Is your question, then, then is there another question whether we can cap the maximum amount of the exceedance per property?
Well, how do you say yes to one and no to the next?
Let me tell you one thing. Erin sort of summarized it very generally. But the way our process works is that in the larger watersheds, which are the ones that are the WS4 classifications, any impervious cover over three acres in size then comes to this board, and they're gonna employ the high-density option, which means they can develop up to 70% and their property has to have engineered stormwater controls. Now, that controls, I think, the first inch or two of rainfall runoff. It holds it for a certain amount of time so that the solids and any sediment and things like that are, are settled out, and the water that's discharged downstream or off their property is, has very low turbidity is the term, but it's, it's basically clear. So those larger projects that would happen in this particular watershed, say a car lot, you know, where there's a lot of impervious area, there's pavement and those kind of things, it would come to you. A large-scale development, um, commercial or industrial would. The, the reason that these smaller projects come to you like this is because the, the general thought was we want to preserve the SNIA allocation for these kind of mom-and-pop projects where they're not subjected to engineered stormwater controls. Because ultimately, the county is going to be responsible for the ongoing, well, could be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of those facilities. We're gonna require the applicant to inspect them, give us an annual report, and do those kind of things. So when you have a smaller-scale project, the thought was they don't necessarily need to fall under that standard. But you bring up a really good question, and, and the planning board talked about it for quite a while, and, and the three-acre threshold seemed to be the, the number that they, they rested on. Now, it's only applicable in the WS4 watersheds. It doesn't apply in some of the WS2s, um, which are gonna be those that, that are west of China Grove, between there and, and the Iredell County line, from, from really about, 801 south to the county line down through Ennequville, that area. So that whole area would be in the WS2, and so they don't have that stormwater requirement. It's, they're all gonna be SNIA permits that come to this board. So I think your comment or your question is probably worthwhile to talk about what do we want, do we wanna employ a similar standard for those?
My other question, Erin, was, it says that the, um, drive between the buildings is gonna be gravel or?
So the, uh, yeah, so everything that's kind of the hatch pattern here is gravel. And then the, kind of the blue pattern here right at the road is concrete.
And the gravel is considered pervious, correct, or not?
No, it's, it's impervious surface, at least as far as watershed's concerned.
That's interesting. Um, if it was crushed rock, would it be, um, considered pervious?
There's some specific types of, uh, stone that you can use with, uh, I think there's like a matted material underneath that can make it an impervious, or it can make it a pervious surface, but that's not what's been proposed.
Yeah. Okay. Let's have some more conversation.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So I was trying to do the math and then you came up with your fancy slide that gave all the numbers. 5,000 square feet is the difference. What's this project look like if it met the 36% threshold?
Gosh, that's not a whole, it wouldn't take a whole lot to cut it off. I'm not sure exactly how they'd want to redesign their site to meet that if that's the way that they wanted, the board wanted to go.
And how, how does it work when they come to the planning board? Is there this discussion ahead of time before the plans are drawn? And then they plan to exceed the 36%? Or they come to you with the plan and you calculate and say, you're over?
It's about, it's the latter there. So they'll come to us with the plan and then we typically give some foresight saying, hey, if you exceed. This percentage here, then we're going to also have to go and apply for a, for an SNI permit as well. So we do lay out that there's what can be done by right and what needs further approval from the board.
Are the applicants here?
Yeah, they should be here.
All right. Any other questions for Aaron? All right, then we'll go ahead and, and if the applicant wants to come forward and, and make any comments. I, I think that'd be, we keep coming up against this SNI thing and when I look ahead, I know it's going to be questions. I, I just, I just wonder what we can do to avoid these in the future. What? So why don't you come on up? The, the question I ask him is, is what does this project look like if it. Met the 36% threshold?
Good question, Mr. Chairman. First of all, my name is Chris Puckett, co-owner of K-Town Homes. We own the property, which is. West of the proposed site. So there is a chance that we could. Resurvey. Add some more land to this site. I'm assuming here. Could do that. Or we could reduce the current site. That's our two options that I thought of in the past two minutes.
I'm willing to approve this and then just kind of have some conversation with the staff about. How long, how long is the building?
If approved today, sir, we projected we would be completed in sometime in September.
I'm sorry, the, the buildings themselves?
Yeah. How long does it take to build?
No.
So it's the actual length?
Ah. Do you know, sir?
I'm JR McMillan, also co-owner of K-Town Homes. The yellow buildings you see, those are 10 by 15 units, so each block is 10 feet. So I'd have to get my site plan to see how many units are there, but. The red ones are 10 by 10 units, so. Each block is 10 feet there as well.
That would be somewhere between, stop 20 units.
Right, right. If, if we kept the current lot size, possibility of taking off the right side where that yellow building is to make it smaller. Or like Chris said, you know, we could actually make the lot bigger to get within our guidelines.
That's what we prefer.
Right. Right. There you go. I understand, I understand. But as, as Chris said, we do own the land that adjoins it so we could resurvey and get. Within the guidelines if we needed to.
With knowing that, would you be willing to do either one of those? Alternatives? Because I really want to see this stay at the 36%.
So if we did that, we wouldn't need the SNI application, correct?
Aaron, can you come up to the microphone, please?
We, we have applied for that permit, so we, I guess we would get that. Application back. Didn't exceed the 36%.
That's if we have the bigger one. There you go. Yeah, so they own this 2.12 acre lot here. So they could just move this lot line a little bit further over and then this proposed development would be under 36% at that point.
And we're close enough, it shouldn't take much land to do that.
Yeah.
At all.
So how much of that's going to delay? We still approve all that today or they have to come back and?
Sure.
Well, it, it's, it's 8% of an acre is what we're talking about. Adding to whatever that watershed SNI percentage is, and we're just playing games at this point. Right? So, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to approve it and then we can have some long-term conversations about where we're going, but we're just playing games. We're saying move the line over, but it's not changing the physical aspect of this project at all.
Correct.
What we're doing is moving the line and it doesn't change anything about what's going to happen with water, right? So I, I'd be, you know. I, I'm in favor of approving it. We can have some. In-depth conversations about where we go from here. But my, my guess is if you came to planning department with some plans, you've already got these plans. Do you have plans drawn?
Yes.
Those are cheap these days, aren't they? You know, they're not cheap. And so, and then hiring an attorney, no, no offense. My, our attorney friend here, but you know, going through all of that to, to move the line to, to get us to. I, I understand the questions surrounding it. You know, but to pummel you guys at this point when it's really not changing anything.
Right.
Let's have that long-term conversation, but I'm, I'm willing to.
We, we are in process with Joshua Knut with erosion control when it's stormwater. Control plan and all that. So we're, that, that is being applied for and being worked on. It's not been approved yet. That plan hasn't, but it's in process.
What is K-Town Homes? Is that a, are you a builder?
We were a company that bought and sold flipped homes. And we. Ended up purchasing this land and. We're going to be storage unit owners soon, hopefully.
It's another revenue stream.
Well, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I really do want them to fiddle with the line. However, you want to. Term it. I think it's really important for us to stick with the rules that we have because this is only going to get more difficult in the future.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I understand that, having had a farm that we had to have surveyed and resurveyed and resurveyed because the road was in the wrong place. I understand the cost.
Craig, I can hear you.
If, if we can't meet that percentage, then I'm going to have to vote no on this.
All right. Thank you for your comments. So what we need to do first, thank you guys. Anything else from y'all? Then we'll go ahead and have a public hearing just on the Z01-21. And.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting, but Commissioner Pierce would like to make a comment.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
As opposed to Commissioner Klusman's request to move the property line. If he moves the property line and puts gravel down to fill in that void, you're right back where you were. In other words, if he moves, if he moves the property line over, let's say 10 feet, well, what's he going to put in that area? He's going to put gravel down to accompany everything else. So you're going to be right back where you, where you are with the impervious percentages.
Commissioner Pierce, why? Why do you assume that they are going to put gravel down?
Because it's going to have gravel around everywhere else.
If the, the site, if you can put up the site plan. So the, the line that we would move would be the far left, black line, bold black line. That area, that left half of this property is undeveloped. So we would not put gravel anywhere in that, that area.
Okay, I just want to make.
Only the gray hashed area is, is the gravel.
Okay, just want to make sure that moving the line did, that it had accomplished something and not just move it. And then I didn't know if you were going to move the property line on the right-hand side, which is where your buildings are. You know, it makes sense to me if you did that, you just filled it up with gravel. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay, so we will have a public hearing now, so we'll open the floor. For public comment regarding Z01-21. Would anyone like to speak? April, let me know if you've got anyone on the line. All right, then we'll close the public hearing and let's see here. We need to vote on a statement of consistency and reasonableness. Aaron?
Yeah, you need to adopt a statement of reasonableness and consistency.
All right, I'll offer up as a motion the statement of consistency, the proposed use is consistent. With the East Land Use Plan, the High 85 Corridor and US Highway 29 overlays. The same type of zoning was approved on the side across the road for a well drilling facility. CBI CD is specific and any changes would require board approval. The use is needed in a growing community is, and is non-detrimental. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, statement of reasonableness. Offer this in the form of a motion. The tract is 3.8 acres and is compatible with current land use plan as well as future land use plan. It's located in a commercial community node. The conditional use district minimizes any other uses and any changes would have to be approved by the board. Some type of use exists across the street, same type of use exists across the street and was approved with the same type of zoning. For CBI CD, the proposed use is good for both business and residential use. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have a motion then to approve Z01-21.
So move.
All right, Jim, motion. Craig, second. All in favor, say aye. All right, so then we'll move to. Aaron, the SNI request. So. I'll, I'll just kind of say what I said before. I think this is a deeper discussion, but at this point, I'm not wanting to penalize them. I just, I don't think it's going to really change anything. But anyway, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve SNI 03-21.
Same.
For a second. Mike, second. All right, open for discussion. Notice I didn't comment on that. You were waiting, you were waiting, weren't you?
I have one more comment.
All right, go ahead.
I think Commissioner Green has brought up a really good point. Now, it may not like go boom overnight, but we do know that the south end of the county is going to. I would say basically explode with development. And so like I said earlier, that's why I really want us to stick with the percentage and. To make sure that in future that the. That this is adhered to by our planning department. In a very concrete way. So I will vote no.
All right. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comments? All right. So that passes and we'll thank you guys for being here. Good luck to you. All right, Aaron, there should be a quick one. Dorset Chapel United Church of God wanting to exceed.
Yes, Matt, I want to see if you can put that on the special meeting here, since it was a, the public hearing was approved with a remote participant. Okay. Okay. All right.
We still have to revoke this patient for public hearings, which we'll figure out, so what we've done in the past on other matters of lesser importance. Is we'll put them on the next agenda of the consent agenda to, to wrap.
Were we talking about this? The, the prior?
What is doing consent next? Okay. All right. This is a permit to exceed request for Dorset Chapel United Church of God. As you might recall, last year we had a request from them for an outdoor sermon for, in, on April 8th in 2020. And so they've come back and they have a couple of sermons, they want to do six sermons this year. Outside, one a month between now and October. And so they're seeking another permit to exceed for each of those events. And they're proposing for six dates, which are May 16th, June 20th, July 11th. August 1st, September 12th, and October 3rd. And for the hours between 10 and 2 o'clock on, and these all fall on Sundays. I have the 10 specific criteria in the reports, and if you have specific questions on them, I'd be happy to answer them. Other than that, you just need to approve or deny or table the request.
All right, so we'll open up the floor if there's any public comments that would like to be made on this. Right, hearing none, we'll close the floor and we have a motion to approve P01-21. All right, a second?
Same.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to a discussion regarding the no wake zone extension. I think where we are on this is. I think where we are on this is the wildlife folks have approved an extension of the no wake zone that would take in that. All of Karen would take in that code. And so we're, we, we checked with wildlife regarding the buoys. And they said two new buoys would need to be put up there. The question before the board here is, would we want to approve map one, which is a proposed extension requested by citizen Michael Baron, and that was not approved, by the way, by wildlife officer. Or second, Tamarack Shore, no wake zone suggested area that was drawn by law enforcement. Let's see. Well, that, that's where we, or we could draw our own and send up, but I think where we seem to have settled is to go along with the recommendation of law enforcement with the wildlife association. What they, what they drew to, to, to cover that entire code, but it would not extend far enough north to reach Mr. Baron's property. So my understanding is what we would need to do is vote to approve a resolution. Is that right? Vote to approve a resolution that you would send. In the D word form. Does everyone kind of up, up on where we are on this? So Jay, our motion would be to approve the resolution in the D word form and ask Carolyn to send this up.
That's it.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the resolution that was recommended by law enforcement and that Carolyn sent that up to the wildlife folks along with the D word.
Thank you.
Right. All right, all in favor, say aye. Jay, anything else?
Can I ask you some questions about our attorney? For future reference? Why would we vote on this if wildlife reports?
Because their rules require that the requests come from the county and not an individual property owner. That's it. And, 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 and just so we're clear, and I think what was different, we've only done, it's only the third one we've done, I think, in my sixteen years. The difference in the second one, which you did last year, and this one was that you entertained discussion about where the location would be. You know, the first one, you get the feedback from wildlife and the submission just goes in as recommended by wildlife and let the property owners deal with wildlife about the location. There's a rulemaking period that allows input that they can do there too. So if you wanted to simplify it for purposes of being conduit to process this is you would entertain the request to place a buoy, receive the wildlife report and just submit it as you did in this case, which is consistent with the wildlife report and let property owners go up there and deal with the ru, the rulemaking process. It would simplify your life a lot to just follow their, we still have to have a public hearing and you still have to hear, hear what people want you to do, but.
Right, Aaron.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hazen is, is online. Are y'all ready?
Hey, Aaron. Yes, sir. Sir, we're ready. And if, Randy, do you want to share the PDFs that's in along, or would you like for us to?
Aaron, you can go ahead and share if you'd like.
Give me just a second to pull that up. I apologize. So I want to start by thanking the, the board for the opportunity to, to present today to, I'm Aaron Babson, work with Hazen and Sawyer. We've been working with the county on the lead and copper rules for, on the last three tasks approved in October of twenty twenty. We have two presentations for you today. The first from Roger Arnold with Hazen Sawyer. He is our lead and copper expert. He has been working on this project from the start. And then the second from myself will discuss the, the bids that were received from regarding the chemical booster pump station. So I do appreciate your time and I'll turn this over to Roger. Roger, I'm pulling up your presentation now. Give me just a minute. I apologize.
Aaron, should I now be seeing the screen? There we go.
Everybody able to see that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, I can see it.
Perfect.
Thank you, Aaron. And thank you. Sure. Thank you again, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon, once again, about this topic. We've, we've shared some updates with you at prior meetings along the way. And this is a good opportunity to provide an update on, on the outcome of this study and the recommendations that were recently given to the county for corrosion control treatments in the system. Here's a quick overview of the presentation for today. We'll go through the, the project background and status, touch on the lead and copper rule regulatory requirements which are affecting this project. We'll present an update on the study approach and the findings and then share the recommended corrosion control treatments that we've presented to the county. As you recall, this is a, is a water quality issue within the northeast Rowan County water system. This serves approximately a hundred and sixty-two active meter connections. This area is currently supplied with water treated, a public water supply from Salisbury Rowan Utilities. This system started up in two thousand and eighteen and which changed customers in this area from private groundwater supply with individual private groundwater wells to this public water system for the first time. So with that came some new federal and state regulatory requirements for operation of a public water system, one of which is the lead and copper rule, which we'll be discussing today. The lead and copper rule is, is the primary regulation in the country that covers lead and copper levels in drinking water. And the regulation requires compliance sampling of ten homes in the northeast Rowan County system based on its size. So after the, the startup of the system in two thousand and eighteen, the county and SRU, in accordance with this rule, began monitoring at at least ten homes every monitoring period. And the lead levels at the ninetieth percentile exceeded what's known as an action level of fifteen parts per billion in those results. The action level is, is not a health-based standard. There is no safe level of lead. But this is a trigger for additional actions specified in the rule and particularly to optimize something called corrosion control treatments. And that was the, the focus of our study and the focus of the results we'll share today. In, in this case, and, and in most, the source of lead is privately owned plumbing materials. And the, the water can influence the amount of lead that is released from those privately owned plumbing materials. And hence, the regulations require some form of corrosion control treatments to reasonably minimize the amounts of lead and copper that can be released from privately owned plumbing materials. So the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality designated the required corrosion control treatments for the northeast Rowan County system in response to this situation. And our recommendations will assist the county in implementing treatment to, to, to meet that designation. So here's an overview of the study, the, the purpose and the approach that, that we had. Our, our goal here was to develop a corrosion control treatment strategy for lead and copper rule compliance. First and foremost, to, to meet the regulations, this needs to be consistent with the state's designated corrosion control treatments. And, and also based on the study, we would expect this to reduce the potential for lead release into drinking water. So we had a most multifaceted approach to evaluate this issue and, and develop a, a recommended approach for treatment of the water to reduce the potential for lead corrosion. This included investigative tap sampling and source assessments of sources of lead within private plumbing, bench scale corrosion control testing, which was performed in collaboration with Virginia Tech, and water quality data analysis for the northeast Rowan County system. And the outcome, which we'll share today, is a recommended strategy to implement corrosion control treatments proposed to meet the EQ's designation. As we've shared before, this lead and copper corrosion is, is best described as a shared responsibility. The sources of lead and copper are contained within a private building plumbing from buildings installed in, in past decades. And these materials can be released into the water through corrosion of building plumbing materials. And so the lead and copper rule requires utilities to take some responsibility for the treatment of that water to help minimize the amount of lead that can be released into drinking water. But there's limits to what corrosion control treatment can accomplish. It's important to keep in mind that because of the location of these lead sources, the results at any given tap are, are highly variable. This is something that can affect one home and not the next. So looking more closely at this with the sources of lead within a private building plumbing, one of the tasks that was performed for this study was investigative tap sampling. This was focused testing, doing more in-depth testing at, at two of the homes where higher lead levels had been detected. So this is, collects additional data to help assess the sources of, of lead release. In both cases, the highest lead levels occurred within the first half liter of water from the tap. That's approximately the, the volume of a, a typical bottle of water that you might, might get. And in subsequent samples at the tap, the lead, lead levels decreased significantly. So after running the water for five liters or more, which could be equivalent to several minutes of flushing the tap, depending on the flow rates, lead levels were much lower. In addition, the county has conducted a system-wide voluntary sampling program intended to get sample results from many more homes throughout the northeast Rowan County system. As I mentioned, the lead and copper rule requires monitoring of ten homes. The county has now been able to obtain samples from approximately a hundred and sixteen sites. And, and of those, considering both the voluntary sampling results as well as the prior compliance sampling results, a total of nine homes in this area have had lead levels above the action level of fifteen parts per billion. This graph on the right shows the, the distribution of those results. In fact, the vast majority of these samples, about eighty out of a hundred and sixteen, have had less than one part per billion or, or even below the detection limit, very low levels of lead. And in a smaller number of samples, again, nine out of the, the total that have been tested, lead levels exceeded that, that fifteen part per billion threshold. This slide will, will cover the approach for the corrosion control testing that was performed in collaboration with Virginia Tech. Samples of treated water were obtained both from Salisbury Rowan Utilities Water Treatment Plant as well as groundwater from a, a certain well within the northeast Rowan County system. And those were used for testing. Those waters were treated in the lab with, with different treatment strategies, different corrosion inhibitors in order to evaluate other treatment altern, alternatives, which could decrease the amount of lead released into water. So these pictures show some examples of what this bench scale testing looks like by exposing treated representative water to samples of, of lead and copper materials that would be present in home plumbing systems, then, then an optimal treatment strategy can be identified. So there's a lot of data and, and numbers that were generated from this study. We'll, we'll share concisely here some of the, the key findings for you today. Again, the objectives of this study were, were relatively narrow and focused to determine if there is an alternate treatment strategy that could reduce lead release. And then we wanted the results to provide a relative indication of treatment effectiveness. This will, will not predict actual lead levels at the tap since it's, it's a, it's an experiment under controlled conditions. But it will say if there's a, a treatment strategy that could be more effective for minimizing lead release. So a few of the key findings here, we found that treated surface water using the, the corrosion inhibitor, the corrosion inhibitor currently added by Salisbury Rowan Utilities actually greatly improved corrosion control for leaded solder and for copper pipe as compared to the prior groundwater source. And interestingly, for another material that's, that's commonly used in, in building plumbing prior to the nineteen eighties, that's lead solder, the treated surface water actually increased lead release from lead solder in these tests as compared to the former groundwater source. So this, in combination with other observations of lead solder at, at, in homes in this area during the county's plumbing assessments led to the conclusion that, that leaded solder in particular is likely the most, the, the single biggest source of lead within drinking water, although there are other sources at the tap, which can even include the faucet itself or other brass fixtures. So among the different treatment strategies that were tested in, in this program, a corrosion inhibitor known as zinc orthophosphate, as well as pH adjustment to slightly increase the pH of the water was effective for decreasing lead release from lead solder. And this was consistent with some results of prior research that were referenced for this study showing that this, this strategy has been used and has been effective elsewhere. So based on, on the findings from the, the bench scale testing and other water quality analysis that was done, we looked at two different approaches for corrosion control treatments implementation and have recommended a, a combination of treatment strategies for the northeast Rowan County system. This includes a chemical booster station as well as centralized treatment adjustments at Salisbury Rowan Utilities. So the chemical booster station would be constructed where water enters the northeast Rowan County system from Salisbury Rowan Utilities. This would allow the zinc orthophosphate corrosion inhibitor and pH adjustments to be added locally and focused on, on the area where the highest lead levels have been detected. And that will also allows the water quality conditions to be more precisely controlled within the, within the system to help meet the state's treatment designation. Also, the, the centralized treatment adjustments at, at SRU, the county is working with SRU to meet the, the state's treatment designation prior to, to June twelfth of this year. And these treatment adjustments will provide consistency between the, the water treatment plant operated by SRU and the proposed chemical booster station so that the, the same product will be added in both places. And this can be accomplished prior to the, the June twelfth deadline. In addition, the county has taken a number of steps to, to minimize lead exposure and protect public health. And this has been discussed at some of our prior meetings. The county has provided certified point-of-use filters to customers throughout the northeast Rowan County system. And we, we recommended in our study that these continue to be provided with replacement cartridges to, to reduce lead exposure until confirmation of lead levels below the action level. The county has, has also initiated a, a system-wide sampling program. And, and continuing this program would, would provide a resource for the community and, and for water customers in the area to monitor lead levels in their drinking water. Lastly, some continued public education materials as, as the county has done in the past. Our, our data shows that flushing the tap for at least three minutes prior to consumption can significantly reduce lead levels that are in, in the water by regularly removing and cleaning the aerator and flushing the, the system. That can further reduce lead levels. So these sorts of public education materials can help to protect the community until the implementation of corrosion control treatment is complete. So in summary, we shared the results of our testing showing that zinc orthophosphate and pH adjustments in the bench scale study. in the bench scale study provided the most optimal treatment for reducing lead release from lead solder. The county is coordinating with SRU to implement the treatment adjustments system-wide and is also planning to construct a chemical booster station to enhance treatment capabilities within the Northeast Rowan County System. The corrosion control treatment recommendations have been submitted to DEQ for review and we're currently awaiting their response. And the required date for treatment optimization is June twelfth. And the final date will be dependent on obtaining approval from the state for this approach. So that concludes this section of our presentations and we'd be glad to take any questions.
Roger, could you go back to slides? Okay, go forward one more. There we go. That's, nope. What does using cold water for drinking do from the perspective of lead?
Sure. Thanks for your question. This has been part of the county's prior public education materials delivered to customers and is also part of EPA guidance for language on minimizing lead exposure. The theory is that hot water can accelerate the release of lead into water as compared to cold water. So if you're using hot water from the tap and there are sources of lead in the home plumbing, then that hot water could contain higher levels of lead than the water just running from the cold water tap.
Thank you.
I'd add that, you know, in this case, all samples for compliance with the lead and copper rule and for the were instructed to be collected from cold.
All right, any other questions for Roger or Aaron? All right, so there's no action required on this. Just wanted to make sure that these super smart folks were able to give some public information about what was happening. So Roger, we appreciate you being with us today. And I here if we move on to item twelve.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, so this will be for the bid of the chemical booster pump station. Task one in our task, in our three tasks that we were asked to do for the county. This all started back, Roger just gave you a bit of background, this started back in December thirty-one, twenty eighteen with the initial action of the initial notice from DEQ of an action level exceedance. And that brings us all the way through to the county issuing an RFQ in June, us coming on board with the county in October and then an advertisement for bid of this package in February seventh. Of course, this is all in response to meeting the treatment designation issued by the state at the point of entry to your system. So the proposed chemical booster station will be located at an SRU property where they currently have a tank near the Chueys facility. That's off of thirteen seventy-five Long Ferry Road in Salisbury. Which is the current location for your master meter between SRU and the Northeast Rowan County Water System. Booster station will be located just off, just outside the perimeter limit of the tank. And you, as a county, you'll have access to it without having to access some of the city property inside the tank facility. We will be currently proposing to inject chemical, the zinc orthophosphate chemical that Roger was just discussing at the point of entry near the meter, which is up just off of Long Ferry Road, which you can see here is the chemical injection and mixing. Just quickly, I mean, what that pump station looks like, it's a twelve-by-twenty facility, fifty-five gallon drums, we'll take some maintenance to come out and replace those. Depending on the concentrations that need to be dosed at that location will, of course, affect the amount of maintenance required. I think that that is currently intended to be, remain under SRU's operational scope at this point in time. We also will need a chemical injection. Make sure that's due to the low flows in the area that attribute to the low velocities in that pipe. That will also be a maintenance item that will be located in the vault next to the chemical injection piece. So you did receive five bids on bid day of March tenth. The low, the apparent low at the time was Dellinger Inc. Still appears to be, we did have a bid discrepancy that worked out to be a forty-one cent difference. Dellinger didn't have an issue with adding that to their bid per the contract. So seven forty-two, nine hundred and forty-one, and that will be our recommended bid for you to accept today. So I will note that that did come under the engineer's estimate that gave to the county of seven hundred and sixty thousand. And the projected schedule for the project, assuming that you approve today, will issue notice of award to the contractor tomorrow morning. That will start the process for them to pull all of their bonds and execute contracts. Those will be back in your hands and hope that we can start the project as soon as possible within anticipated notice of receipt of April twentieth. With a hundred and eighty-day contract completion date for substantial completion, we should have the pump station in service by October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and then final completion in November sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. One thing that's important to note is we do have a June twelfth, twenty twenty-one compliance deadline with the state that we intend to meet with the changes at SRU that Roger discussed in the previous presentation. So today, what I'll leave you with is a recommendation for the acceptance of Dellinger's bid in the amount of seven hundred and forty-two thousand, hundred dollars, forty-one cents. And I'll turn it back over to the board for that vote. And I'm here for any questions you may have.
Aaron, I've got a quick question. Back to the schematic of the building.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I probably heard this incorrectly, but when you were talking about the fifty-five gallon drums and all the stuff that's inside there, did I understand it to say that this is going to be under SRU's control, mixing everything?
I will defer to Aaron Church on this one, but I believe that that will, they are currently your ORC for your water system. And I believe that that would remain the case for this pump station as well.
Okay, my chairman just told me yes.
Hey, Aaron, could you describe, of course, I know you've seen a lot of these facilities, could you describe security for
Yeah, so that's a great question. What we'll have, and it's difficult to see, I wish I'd brought a better sight plan, but there's a double-hinged gate right here at this facility. And the contractor will be responsible for adding new eight-foot chain link fence around that secures the pump station with the double gate that would have a lockable feature on.
And how is the building itself secure inside the gate?
It would have, it's a locked door inside the gate. I'll confirm the specifications on what type of block you would like for me to send that to you at a later date.
In crazy world today.
Understood. So that is certainly something we can look at during construction and talk to the contractor about, you know, we want something that would be a bit more secure than the current features. We can certainly add that.
All right, so what we need to do, I Aaron, what we need to do is I'll make the motion to be approved the bid from Dellinger Incorporated for seven hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars and forty-one cents.
Second.
Another discussion. And all in favor say aye. Before we leave this, I do just want to take a second and thank Aaron Church for his leadership on this. This is nothing to play with, and Aaron's been all business. When it's come to really jumping all over this, these are serious legal issues and serious health issues. So Aaron, we appreciate your good work on that. Also want to thank Hazen Group for your guidance and all of the times that you've spent with us on Zoom meetings explaining all of this. Also wanted to thank the leadership of the City of Salisbury for Lain Bailey for his cooperation on this, for the mayor of Salisbury, Karen Alexander, and also the folks at SRU with Jim and his crew. Because they're, they're going to carry this out and they've been willing to listen to a lot of folks from Virginia Tech down here to Hazen and change up some of the things they're doing without them. This wouldn't, this wouldn't have worked. So we appreciate the leadership across the board. And then thank you to the citizens down there in Dukeville for their patience. This was never anticipated. These things happen in Rowan County and SRU is moving as quickly as it can to fix this. And we appreciate so much your patience while we do this. All right, moving on to item thirteen. Jay, you've got a pump station easement we need to talk about.
This is the easement for the pump station. It's on the city of Salisbury's property. And so we need the easement to locate and build and make those improvements. And it'll be an easement that allows us to maintain it and repair it and replace it until hopefully one day when we can give this system all over to SRU.
This is on the east side of the
Yes.
So we need to vote to approve the the new pump station easement. Isn't that simple?
It is that simple. One caveat, we will substitute, we have enough of a legal description in the proposal to suffice. We are having the property surveyed, and so we'll actually substitute the final survey in for the legal description, but we'll
All right, so I make the motion to approve the easement of subject to final survey adjustments. Second, all in favor say aye. I think we can move on. Caleb's not here, but we got a report from Caleb, Rowan County Staff moved removing twenty-seven thousand, four hundred pounds of roadside litter and debris along with one hundred and eighty-nine discarded tires during the month of February. Good heavens, people, what are we doing? In addition to our letter removal efforts for the previous, Montbron County Law Enforcement has responded to numerous solid waste-related complaints, conducted thirteen interviews and issued ten citations for littering and illegal dumping. Ryan will continue to mitigate the illegal dumping of solid waste litter through collaborative efforts across all agencies, public awareness campaigns, litter cleanup events, education, outreach. So thank you to all of you who continue to make a difference by fostering good stewardship through Ryan County. For those of you aren't cooperating, we would appreciate your cooperation and not throwing your stuff out of the side of the road. That'd be awesome.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a curiosity question. How much do you get charged when you get a citation for littering?
Any idea? Like, make up a number. Thousand dollars, let's say a thousand dollars.
Some places charge a hundred and twenty-five bucks.
All right. Budget amendments, we have motion to approve budget amendments. All right, second, all in favor say aye. We've got some board appointments. Ellis Cross Country Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners. These terms are three of the terms for the three current fire commissioners expired at the end of this month. And Connie McLean, Paul Durham, and John Evans have applied. And their term would expire on April thirtieth. Do we have a motion to accept these three? All in favor say aye. There's one vacancy and we have two applicants. Do we have a motion for either of these? We've got Jack Keppley Jr. in a little parts and record.
Second.
All right, motion for Jack Keppley, motion second, all in favor say aye. Region F Aging Advisory Committee, Crystal Clement, applied to fill a vacant at-large seat. We have a motion to approve Crystal Clement. Right, motion second, all in favor say aye. Jennings has applied to fill the remainder of a vacant ETJ seat for the Town of Rockville Planning and Zoning ETJ. Motion second to approve. Mark, our motion second, all in favor say aye. Woodley Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners, Robert Turner, Sam Wetmore, and Wesley Hastings have applied for reappointment. Motion to approve those three. All in favor say aye. Now I move the board entering the closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one four three, three one eight, one one eight one to consider approval of amendments of the closed session filed on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And for attorney, one four three, three one eight, one one eight three for attorney-client privilege communication regarding regulatory compliance and potential litigation. So we have a second for that. All in favor say aye. Soon as we clear the room, we'll get started. Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. Craig, get better, buddy.